Call the committee to order the staff and budgetary.
President of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Horansky.
Here.
Councilmember Sipsetes. Councilmember Schmansky.
Here.
Mayor Prochandervalki.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Panaya.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
City director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City as mayor.
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings. We have two of them tonight on the same issue. Public hearings for establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district for 314 Seventh Street. The request has been received from Stephen H. Gavola to establish an obsolete property rehabilitation district for the properly located at 314 Seventh Street pursuant to public act 146 of 2000 to facilitate the redevelopment of the property. The affected property owners have received formal written notice of the public hearing, and the public will be provided an opportunity to comment. No action is anticipated at the conclusion of the public hearing. However, this matter is on the agenda for consideration later in this meeting. Is there anybody who would like to comment on this obsolete property rehabilitation? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on that issue. The next issue is the public hearing for an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate, application from Stephen H. Gavola for the property located at 314 Seventh Street. An application has been received for Stephen H. Gavola for an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for the property located at 314 Seventh Street pursuant to public act 146 of 2000. The affected property owner has been formally written, has received formally written notice of the public hearing, and the public will be provided an opportunity to comment. No action is anticipated at the conclusion of the public hearing. However, this matters on the agenda for consideration later in the meeting. Is there any public who would like to comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Continuing out. Citizens comments on agenda related items. Are there any citizens who would like to comment on agenda related items tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on with the consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are the consent agenda considered by the city manager to be routine and have priority. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member constantly have an item from the consent agenda revoked and taken up during the remainder portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, cash balance, revenue to expenses and expenses, quarterly financial update, quarterly investment update, notification regarding next work session. Is there a motion? I'll make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion in second. A second and a further discussion. Attorney now please take your role.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Horansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsetes. Councilmember Schmansky.
Yes.
Mayor Prochandervalki.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Panaya.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Under new business, consideration of establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district for the property located at 314 Seventh Street. A request has been received from Stephen H. Gavola to establish an obsolete property rehabilitation district for the property located at 314 Seventh Street pursuant to public act 146 of 2000 to facilitate redevelopment of the property. A public hearing on the request was held earlier than this meeting. At this time, council could take action to approve a resolution establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district for the property located at 314 Seventh Street. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Have a motion in second and a discussion. Attorney now please take your role.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Horansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsetes. Councilmember Schmansky.
Yes.
Mayor Prochandervalki.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Panaya.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of an application for an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for Stephen H. Gavola. I'm sorry. For the property located at 314 Seventh Street. An application has been received for Stephen H. Gavola. I can't say it right. And an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for property located at 314 Seventh Street pursuant to public act 146 of 2000. A public hearing was conducted earlier this meeting on this request. This item could be considered if council took action to establish an overajustment to the previous agenda item. At this time, council could take action to approve an application for Stephen H. Gavola for the obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for property located at 314 Seventh Street. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion in a second and a discussion. Comments?
I've got a question. 314 Seventh Street, is that one of those green buildings on the market?
Yeah, it used to be the candy shop.
Okay. No, no. That's another one. That's another one. Excellent. Another building.
This is, at the hearing, like a hardware store.
Is this the one that had a barber shop in it?
No.
It's yellow.
This has been vacant for quite a while. Probably twenty, thirty years.
Thirty, forty years.
We drove by it today and really does decent rehabilitation.
Well, and the nice thing is that this is one of those buildings that has so much character, and the fact that it's going to be restored is, or hopefully will be completely restored to its path glory is really great for N S D, because again, there's not many of this type of building that, you know, the old style falls across. You imagine with the wooden sidewalk and the platoon outside the door, so.
I went around that building.
It'll look a lot better. Right now, it looks like it's pretty light.
Well, that's what I can say, it's great that it's being seen.
I do have a question. Is that in the, isn't that in a residential area?
Yes. It was a whole wire down the street.
It's, yeah, it's on the Key Street.
Yes.
It's a truck road.
It's a truck road.
It's a truck road, I know that, but I thought that area, because I know just south of that. There's another big building. And that wasn't in a residential area. I know.
There's a barber shop across, just across.
Yeah.
I think it's a barber shop.
So I'm just questioning the zoning on it, because I thought it was residential. I thought it did give it a lot of use for every year to fund back to being residential. So I'm just asking the question. I'm not opposed to it at all, I'm just, a lot of clarification on this only.
Whether that can be a special use for a recorder or not.
Stephen, I have a question. First of all, I apologize for screwing up your last name. I tried to do it best of all ways.
You did fine. It's Gagola.
Gagola.
Gagola, as we syllable, yeah.
I noticed the letter you sent, you had two years for completion if everything goes right.
I'm sorry.
Two years to completion if everything goes right? So when do you have to start, do you think?
We're moving pretty good. We are moving pretty good. It's three left out today, we're filling the dumpsters. I'm sorry, did you, do you mean for the completion date?
Right.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. If it works out, yes. It should be earlier than that. I put it that a little farther.
I'm just curious if that is still holding true with all the things that are going on.
No, it should be, I'm hoping, I'm hoping a lot sooner.
Good deal.
You know, and based on my track record, it's just been, I was retired and then I came back out of retirement, so. And I'm in a new area to assemble crews. I've already got some good mechanical, local, local people, mechanical, subcontractors, electrical plumbing and these kind of things lined up, and so it should go pretty smooth.
So you're well off the way?
I mean?
You're well off the way?
Yes, yes.
I have a question. Are you, I mean, are you looking in the building afterwards, or?
Uh, I don't know. Not very, you know, constructed.
Right.
But afterward, I do, I think I'm going to have a residence up here and have a little, I'm going to, you know, I may have one towards the rear, the one over the, but we'll see. Maybe rent it out. I may rent it out and have another place. I may, I may do another, yeah, I love this town, and I may do another historical property, so.
Great.
Yeah.
We're looking forward.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, comments? Attorney now please take your role.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Horansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsetes. Councilmember Schmansky.
Yes.
Mayor Prochandervalki.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Panaya. Yes. Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of amending the city fee schedule. The city adopts the schedule, the schedule of fees annually as part of the budget process. Two areas, special use permit changes and rental inspection fees have been identified as not included on the adopted fee schedule and needs to be adopted by city councils so they can incorporate and publish. At this time, council could take action to amend the city fee schedule. Is there a motion? I'll make a motion.
For that.
Have a motion in second and a discussion, comments?
Okay. Was that for the special, special usage? This is, you'll get a chance to talk at the start of the meeting. Unless, unless there's a chance. I apologize. You're welcome. Thank you.
I was looking at the schedule, and I, first of all, I wanted to understand how you came up with the numbers, because I thought they were a little light in some areas. Some city staff looked at it.
Yep.
Is there enough here to answer that?
For what section, sorry?
The numbers, the numbers on the fee schedule, are these the same ones that were recommended by the new inspectors?
Yes, the registration inspection fees are the same as what has been in place, and the noncompliance are all new, and those were recommended by state built.
Those were, I can't hear you. What did you say that? They were recommended by who?
The, back to the registration inspection, those are the rates that have been in place for a number of years. In terms of the noncompliance fees, those were recommended by state built, who's working on that program for the rental inspection program.
I just thought that the unregistered rental, the unregistered rental second notice, I thought those were a little low.
How much is that? I don't know, my iPad.
It's a hundred dollars for unregistered rental for the first notice and two hundred dollars unregistered rental for the second notice.
Yeah, that's really low. I think.
Should we amend that if we choose?
You certainly can.
I think they should at least force that.
How's council feel about that? I'm trying to.
I have no objections to increasing it to like two hundred and three hundred or two hundred and four hundred.
No, two hundred and four hundred. Still objections, can we make that happen?
I would imagine you just make this part of the voting. So that's just going to be for the unregistered rental, first and second notice and the remainder stay the same?
Correct.
Correct.
Yes.
So.
Who made the motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Second.
Any other comments or concerns? George, are we doing that right?
That was a motion to amend the previous motion I've taken?
Yes.
That would be correct.
Any other comments, concerns? Attorney now please take your role.
They're voting on the motion to amend the previous motion.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Horansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsetes. Councilmember Schmansky.
Yes.
Mayor Prochandervalki.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Panaya.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
And you vote on the underlying motion as a.
Overall.
Do we need another person, sir?
Do you already have a case? Just kind of voted on it.
Please take your role.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Horansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsetes. Councilmember Schmansky.
Yes.
Mayor Prochandervalki.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Panaya.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of applications to boards and commissions. City clerk is taking action to advertise vacancies through the compensation commission, harbor commission, historic history commission, tree commission, and zoning board of appeals. Where all manager appointment require a motion second and council voted in support. Nominees for council, appointments do not require a second. After all nominations are made, council votes on nominees until the one nominee receives majority vote. The following applications have been received. An application for tree commission, there is one vacancy ending 12/31/20. It's a real appointment. I would like to appoint Sam Corren to that. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Attorney now please take your role.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Horansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsetes.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky.
Yes.
Mayor Prochandervalki.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Panaya.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Concerns and comments. Citizens comments. Citizen not reviewing for citizens' comment on municipal services. Activities or areas of city involvement. Cities in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments. Limited to five minutes, letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Are any citizens here to fight the rights of the communities? Attorney now, before we move on to officials and staff. This is Mr. Cooper's last T V. Also by Mr. Cooper.
Yep.
You, you look way too happy.
Ah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you for all your service.
I sure feel happy. I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity to spend four years on city council. I learned a lot of stuff, and I think we have a great city council, I really do. And hopefully, I guess I come to the meeting once in a while.
Please don't be a stranger. Come in.
I'll try not to be.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
The other thing I'd like to bring up tonight is COVID, as we all know, is an increase when it comes. I'd like to get some info on how you feel about virtual meetings. I think the organizational meeting should be in person, but after that, to the wonderful virtual. Kind of, we'll start, Mr. Taylor, do you have any other?
Well, certainly, it's council's priority to go to virtual meetings, and we can have no reason, virtual meetings through the end of the year, and in person here, it becomes a little more narrow focus, or it has to be for a medical reason, you know, the council might could make it for medical reasons, or if you're in the military. I think those are the two.
Or if there's a state emergency.
Or if there's a state of emergency. So, I mean, we can do it for no reason through the end of the year. If you didn't want to go into, back to virtual meetings, staffing a little bit of time to make that work. I've been talking with Ed about the possibilities, and he believes that we can have a system where councilmen, staff can participate with video and audio, and then have the citizens that want to attend do it by audio only. That might take just a bit to get it put together, because you'd have to put some more, I believe, some additional things on there on hand, but that's our only limitation, is if we want to, want to have a video, which I would recommend, it'd just take a little bit of time. But I can talk to Ed and see if we can get that turned around by the 17th.
Let's move on to council members. Martin Panaya, what do you think?
I'd be opposed to it. I know in my experience, I would be out of state the next couple of meetings at the end. That would help me if I compete, and also I'd be a quarantine if I'll be out of state, so that would help me. But yeah, to be on the state side, I think it would be for the health of everyone.
Mr. Valkyrie.
I like you in this way. I think we can see people talk.
Mr. Schmansky. I'm not opposed, but I do agree, this is, I think, a more effective way of holding a council meeting, but I also understand that things may be getting difficult with COVID riding. I know that N S D had thirty cases in seven days, and the month of October was double of what we had previous to that. So there is obviously some issues to concern. I do like the idea, though, if we go with the Zoom, and we go with video for staff and council, I think that helps a little bit. At least you can see the other council members on it. And I know that our laptop does allow that. It's just that, you know, you just have to push the little camera button up on the top, so.
I would prefer that, Zoom till the end of the year, but then, my, my, with these somewhat personal, I have a little surgery coming up, and it would just be easier for me to, to be a president of meetings if I could do this in life.
I'm somewhat finding, the people in the room today, it's not too many, but if we start getting a little crowded, there may be a limit to what we can, what we can have in here.
In this building?
Yeah. Very limited. I believe they're limited to twenty percent of their capacity, seating capacity?
Okay, so what I'm hearing right now is that we're just going to kind of take one meeting at a time and see how it goes? Is that what I'm hearing?
Or, or I think I'm going to have to make the decision to go virtual if that's your preference.
I, I, my preference would be personally, I would like to be, I would like to see it go virtual to protect everybody's safety, but I'm only one person, and I'm willing to go along with whatever council wishes are.
How much is the noise in the meeting in the public? Is there any questions, Senator?
The, the open meetings, that hosting requirements is all you would need to do, so. There would be no problem with that.
And I can, I can work with staffing, I just to make sure, give the council a time frame where we can be down to the line, make sure we have the audio and all that, intricacies, if you're not the video, all that worked out. And I can report that back down at the organizational meeting.
Okay. So we'll make a final decision at the organizational meeting. Why don't you work everything out, and let it go? Do you want to hear something tonight?
No, if, what I'm hearing from council is preferences to have virtual meetings, and we can start that on the 17th, which is a matter of, I've got to double check the staff to see if we'll have the video component available, if that kind of, not, we'll just do audio until we're ready for video.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you to Heather. Good job, Heather. I like, we were talking earlier that we, maybe we should have it do as be safe, Heather.
No, we won't put that far. It's both of us, okay.
Yeah, very good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, do you have anything?
Nothing at this time.
City attorney?
Nothing, sir, thank you.
Heather, do you have anything else? Do you want to talk about your, all your work you did?
It was a long night, but everything went very well, so.
We started in when?
I was in the park at teen, and I was home by eleven thirty, so it really went very well.
And I'm going to bring about, maybe you don't like it, but Heather actually had a couple who got sick and couldn't come in to vote. Heather actually delivered the application to them, so they had an opportunity to vote and bring her back. I think that's over the bar. Let's give her a round of applause. Thank you. DBW?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Five. Pardon me.
He left.
He left? He's gone. Finance.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
And I'm missing, oh, engineer here.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
If I missed anybody, I can't see them. You're funny. Martin Panaya. I'll be right back.
I just, are, they're not construction and all done? On 31 with the pipelining and stuff?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
The, I don't know if you saw the article that we had in the paper today, kind of gave me the update. The contractor had everything set up to be completed by last Friday, and then all the traffic control removed on Saturday. However, they had a severe equipment failure, and so there's work to be done on one of the very last section of pipe that they have. I was joking in our staff meeting this morning that every time I do an interview with the news advocate, it seems like the information changes, so. They were supposed to reinflate that liner today, and then it would have been completed, but they had some other issues, so fingers crossed they're scheduled to reinflate that tomorrow, or we can call, re-cook it, and then hopefully all the traffic control can be removed through by the weekend. Their work will still continue in the community, but the work on 31 will be completed by then.
Mr. McCool, if they can't complete, can they take down the ones other than around Sixth Street? That's the only one, right, that they actually have to work on?
Yeah, they have, they actually have removed a lot of the type three barricades at the intersections, and then the barrels that remain are per the state requirements to provide that, that protection in those tapers. So they substantially reduced the amount of traffic control that's out there, but and the state has granted them the extension on their permit. Has that expired on Saturday, the 31st?
Mr. McCool.
Yes.
The high winds. I know we have some damage to this tree, now we can summarize what happened?
Actually, we had quite a few trees come down, but not as many as we've had in the past with those storms. I think that the, quite frankly, the residents working with the tree commission, and then the public works guys, you know, maintaining that program of cutting down trees when they're, when they're dead or trimmed, when they've got decayed sections of it, I think has really been a benefit to the community, because we don't have a whole lot of damage that occurs during those storms. The most impact we had was just along the lake shore with the sand blowing and wave run up. The water was pushed up very high as the, out of the beaches flooded up at the avenue for the day. By Monday morning, that one had drained back out. But yeah, we had guys in most of the night through the day on Sunday.
I understand you built a berm, and that washed away their washing layer?
We built the berm twice, actually. We built the berm in anticipation of that storm the week prior, and the storm eventually washed that away. And then when the guys got done with cutting trees, they went back out there and just basically piled sand up to help mitigate that wave run up.
All right, one more question. So the leaf pickup program, how is that running?
So we started the leaf pickup this week, and the program is for the public, well, for the crews to go completely around the entire city once every week. So we'll make it a quick, not quick, but we will go through the street by street, pick up all the leaves that are in the street, and then they'll go back doing other duties the rest of the week. But we do that each week through this month, and then through the first week of December. This week in particular, there were so many people getting leaves back out after that storm, and a lot of people were stopping the crews and asking them, you know, if it's too late. So we actually are working on a second pass right now, but we'll keep working on cleaning up those leaves until the first week of, of December.
Looks like you're going to ask them, good weather, if they find a safe base.
I wish this would hold out for a while.
Oh, yeah, killing them.
I'm going to get some cars coming down. John, the Vicki.
I'm going to get some cards from you now. John, Ricky, Jacob, Shmanzki. These are both for anniversary, and then for birthdays, Jacob, Shmanzki. I don't know if the cards will be there anymore. Kaylee Owens, Jeremiah Hader, these are birthdays. Doug, Vancicle, Mick, McCain, and Jeff, Abula.
Thank you. Mr. Woski.
Would you have answered all my questions on that?
Mr. Shmanzki.
Well, you know, I'd just like to compliment not only Heather, but all of your workers and all of the full volunteers for the remarkable, well-organized, the well-executed event. And not only that, but also complimenting our citizens for how conscientious they were in coming out to vote, and how respectful they were of other people in line. They were keeping their social distancing. They, they were doing the right thing, so it was really nice to see.
Thank you. I could have done the collection of council workers. They are coming here.
Councilmember Bitter.
Hi.
Councilmember Beaton.
And again, it's been a great show.
Now, if you have any further remarks?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate Chris and Goodspeed on a promotion to detective sergeant, and I think he'll do real good doing that.
Is there anything else? Thank you all for coming. Stay healthy. Good evening.